All right, so now being a little bit before 6:00, I'll announce that this is the Monday, November 18th, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We had a brief executive session at 5:30, and now we are in open session. Our first item on the agenda is warrants paid. So for warrants paid, we've got out of the, this is what, just the BOS?
Yeah, those are accounts that BOS is technically responsible for.
All right, the selectmen's accounts. First one is for $23,682.55, and this has got a large Area 58, which we get money from.
And then it goes out.
It's right, kind of a revolving fund. So that's the first one. Second one is $87.52 for, it looks like some blue tarps from Albershan. Hopefully that doesn't mean we've had some leaking, water leaking issues, but there could be. The Moon and Back Cafe.
Chair's Department.
Chair's Department, okay. Oh, for the painting, very, money well spent. $174.27. And then Mass Cultural Council, $228. It looks like this was for a storyteller on, or is for a storyteller that will be performing in, no, last year on Valentine's Day.
That's an old cultural council.
Okay, great.
They didn't have anybody to sign.
All right, so ratification of vote and appointment, motor equipment repairman.
So this is for Benjamin Sorrow to ratify the vote that was taken in executive session on November 4. And this is to formally appoint him to the position of motor equipment repairman effective November 5, 2019 through June 30, 2020.
Great, thank you. All right, so I'll make a motion that we appoint Benjamin Sorrow as the motor equipment repairman effective 11/5/19 until 6:30, 2020.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you want to sign that one, John? All right, close special town meeting warrant.
So I was looking for a vote just to formally close the warrant for the special town meeting which is scheduled for December 16, 2019 at 7:00 PM.
Have there been any additions?
No, with the final draft that I have here, is that something maybe withdrawn from it before it goes to print?
So nothing came in today?
No, no.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion that we close the warrant for the special town meeting to be held December 16, 2019.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Conservation Commission, membership change, seven members to five members.
So this we can actually pass over tonight, but you'll see it again in December. Long story short, they are looking to have their membership number changed from seven to five due to quorum issues. And I've run it by Town Council. We can't identify anything in our general bylaws or even in the Conservation Commission's rules and regulations that says they have to be seven members. So in that case, Town Council said that it's a vote of the Board of Selectmen. Linda Letty wanted Conservation to just have like one more opportunity to make sure that this is the direction that they want to go in prior to the Selectmen voting, so we can pass over this and, you know, revisit it if we get a formal letter from Conservation.
Okay.
Do you have a different sheet of that? Because I don't have that even on here.
Did I not print out the correct one?
I don't know.
Oh, that doesn't have it on there either.
Oh, maybe the old ones were printed. Here's a new one.
Okay.
The new one is what was posted.
Okay, good.
I made it go out to the.
Okay, so we'll just hold on that until.
I would further notice.
Okay. Develop memo regarding additional payroll provisions.
So this was something that John and I had met with the town accountant on, and we were thinking that it made sense just to increase the checks and balances if for some of the town department heads that don't have, Mark comes in and obviously like he's signing mine, he's signing this whole warrant package, but to have me initial the actual timesheets for the department heads that are under the purview of the Board of Selectmen, just so that someone from this entity has seen them, and to have me sign Bree's timesheet and Steve Sorrow's timesheet.
Okay.
As like the department head for them who's in the building every day.
Okay, that makes perfect sense to me.
And we just wanted to put that in writing to the town accountant so that.
I think as we've gone forward, you know, professionalized, we're making the roles clear, and this will make, this is the authority for all the departments, except the major ones like even Fire and Police Chief will initial, just to show that she's seen.
Okay.
Gives her a chance to have a heads up on what's going on.
True, great idea.
Right.
Yeah.
And just another, just another check and balance.
I love it, I think that's a great idea. So you're going to put something together?
I can put together a memo that just talks about this vote. Do you want to vote for me to send the memo to the town accountant? I think that would be good if we had.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to send a memo to the town accountant laying out the new payroll provisions that we've discussed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, special town meeting article recap.
So I have draft warrants for each of you. Do you need one, John?
Yeah.
So we need to make a decision if we are doing the mailing to all of the households like we typically do. Finance Committee had indicated that they would assist me with finding a way to pay for it, because obviously we did not budget for printing and mailing costs for a special town meeting at this point in the year. It's fairly long because of Article 1.
Right.
Initially, you know, there's been a lot of ideas kind of talked about. Council had said that there is no obligation on the towns and to mail it, but I don't know that we want to deviate from past practice without giving people a little warning. So maybe for the sake of kind of keeping things standard, especially where people may have a real interest in the solar bylaw.
Well, and the.
And number two.
And number three, too.
All of them.
Safety zones.
I think that it might be better to just kind of deal with the cost and get it mailed out.
I agree. I think specials are always a little tentative in that people can sometimes think you're trying to put something by.
Right.
And I think it's got, it goes out to everybody, they can make up their mind.
So if we do that, ideally, we need to get this posted by, probably by Monday, and then I need to get it out to print so that we can mail it. So if you want any Selectmen recommendations, why we have this agenda item is if you want to go through the articles and vote your recommendations to have them actually printed in the warrant, we should do that tonight.
Right now, there are no financial.
There's the, so this article number, sorry, this one's so long.
Yes, potentially.
So potentially, Article 4 is to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $12,501 to pay the required 20% match for an eight-passenger accessible van for the Council on Aging from a Massachusetts Department of Transportation grant or take any action relative thereto.
Okay.
I don't think we'll have a problem identifying the available funds for this.
I agree.
So if you want recommendations to show up, so the planning board already.
I don't particularly want to recommend solar, not because I'm against it.
Well, I don't think we should do planning board articles.
Planning board already did their recommendation. Their 4-0-1 recommending in favor of that.
I think we could do it on the chief.
Mm-hmm.
I think we could do it on the Article 4 for the van. I think we would do it on the safety zones and.
Right, since we're the sponsor.
Right.
Okay, so let's go back then to Article 2.
Okay.
Liz, would you have another copy of that? That's okay.
I don't.
Okay. All right, so for anybody listening or watching at home, Article 1 is a solar bylaw, and this is just a revision of our existing bylaw. This will replace it.
It's changed extensively, yes.
Okay. So this will replace our current zoning bylaw regarding solar.
Right, and Planning Board already held the public hearing on that.
Beautiful, okay.
And then Article 2 is the one relative to the police chief.
Okay, so we're not going to recommend the Planning Board article because it's really not appropriate for us.
Did the signed warrant go down there?
It's right here.
Okay.
I have it for you.
Okay. All right, so Article 2, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 2.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unfortunate Mark's not here, because I'm sure he would support these as well. Article 3, this is to see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to create safety zones. I'll make a motion that we recommend Article 3.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a question on, since Mark is absent, do we, you know, one person absent?
Well, the warrant is only going to be signed by the two of us.
Yeah, right.
Because he's not here.
So it'll say recommended 2-0.
Yeah, 2-0.
So it won't even mention?
No, no.
All right, so the Council on Aging, this is going to stay, do you think?
I believe that this is staying as of right now.
Okay.
I think we should leave it in, even if it's turned down, we can just pass over to Special.
Right.
Okay, so let's leave that then.
Then people know it's coming, something in the works. Okay, so I'll make a motion that the Selectmen recommend Article 4.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So Article 5, where did this come from, bylaw review?
Yeah, so this was actually, initially, it came about from Brian Kling, our animal control officer.
Okay.
He had alerted the Bylaw Review Committee that the state had changed a lot of their baseline regulations regarding animal control and that all of the communities were being strongly urged to basically adopt the mirror of said language. So it went through bylaw review briefly just to kind of formalize it in the format of an article.
They took a vote?
I believe they did. They're the ones sponsoring it, so Alan sent it to me. And basically, what it does is it establishes, it ups the fines a little bit for the various offenses, and it also adds a provision for a third offense and for a fourth or subsequent offense, like anything beyond four offenses. So that was really the main kind of change. And then also, in the definitions section, which is at the first part of Article 5, it's only the last paragraph that's being edited. And then Section 10, that one was updated with all of the fees, and then the same thing on Section 11. So it's being proposed by the Bylaw Review Committee, and I believe that they'll be prepared to make a brief presentation on it at town meeting.
So would this be something that we would take a vote on?
I think you should, because animal control comes under the purview of the Selectmen.
And I also think we should support the Bylaw Review Committee.
Yeah.
These people are doing excellent work.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion that the Selectmen recommend Article 5.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Liz, Article 6.
So I was hoping that we might know the Board of Assessors are meeting right now, and I wasn't sure if maybe this would be withdrawn. This would be if they take a vote tonight to release from the overlay fund, $290,000 they were talking about releasing, which is their vote to take, but I think in light of some expenses that we may have on the horizon, I'm not sure that being so quick to take that money and earmark it for something at a special town meeting that's not occurring at a normal time of the year, I don't really think that that's the best course of action. In short, Barbara was looking at all the numbers. If we applied it to the interim tax rate, it would be a reduction of approximately 50 cents per thousand, but then having to make up for that next year, plus different expenses that may or may not be on the horizon, say with Regional Dispatch, for example, or Finance Committee, they're updating the entire capital plan. Then if people experience a large increase, because all the valuations are likely going up, I think that that would be confusing and kind of troubling for people.
I think we'd have.
So I feel like we're better off staying the course, and it's fine if they want to release the money, that's fine, but I think we should wait until May, until people are expecting this kind of a discussion.
Right.
And just sort of press pause on this.
Okay.
So if it does stay in, I don't know that you would want to recommend favorably on that.
Okay.
It would hold up the recap sheet, so that's an issue, so the tax rate couldn't be set.
Okay.
And then tax bills could be delayed going out for the first quarter.
Well, what's the benefit to doing this?
That they want to reduce the tax rate.
Right now.
Right now. It doesn't make sense, because the tax rate would go down, let's say, for this year, and then it not only would go up that amount next year, but plus whatever was.
Yeah, it'd be better, right, to hold off.
People would, right. The other issue I have, we shouldn't be doing this at a special town meeting, having it come in the last night.
Right.
It should be thoroughly discussed, the town accountant should be bought into it. I don't believe she feels that it's, you know.
No, she doesn't.
It's appropriate at this time. It may be appropriate for the maybe.
She's at their meeting now.
Okay, okay.
So I wouldn't.
So if it stays in here, I think you might want to take a vote that, you know, you're not recommending.
All right, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen are not recommending Article 6.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that's going to be 0-2.
Yes, because that, it's that strange, it has to be like.
Double negatives.
Yes, yes, so it'll say recommended by BOS 0-2.
0-2, okay.
I just.
Okay.
Maybe we can get an update before we.
They have not taken a vote, they are discussing removing the articles.
Okay.
Okay.
They have not finally agreed. I wanted to leave them alone, you know, rather than have them feel that I was pressuring them already then.
We just stipulated now that that article and Article 7 may be coming off tonight, but if not, they just voted unfavorably for Number 6, and now we're about to do Number 7.
Okay, so I am gleaning that Number 7, the same situation, we're going to hold off until the annual town meeting.
I think that that makes more sense.
Yeah, we're not opposed to what they want to do with the upgrade, it's just we don't want to do it today.
In the special.
In the special, within the annual.
Exactly.
Right, right, yeah, financial matters are always better left for the annual. Okay, so regarding Article 7, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen do not recommend Article 7.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that one's 0-2 as well. All right, so it will not be larger, but it may be smaller.
Yes.
Okay.
And I already sent it to Town Council.
I saw, that's where I got my copy. Okay, great. All right, so Barbara, did you have anything else for us?
No, that was my big concern, is just trying to explain it to the Board of Assessors so that they understand the concept of the two-year filing.
Sounds good.
I would say, just, you know, generally, that they've done an excellent job with the Cisco, and that's the reason we're even contemplating this, is because we had built up funds in preparation if the court went against us. But I think the way it's been handled has been excellent, and it's just now just trying to figure out when's the appropriate time to do this.
Which seems like it's in the annual.
Yes.
Annual, it's slow and easy over a couple of years, then we need to get some of the other things.
Not all at once, yeah.
And we've got time now to.
Sure.
Figure that out.
Very good, okay, sounds good. All right.
I'm going to be down there if you need to refer here.
Thank you, Barbara.
You're welcome.
Okay. Do you have an update for us, Liz?
I do. So I've been working with Charlie Seelig again on the regional transportation options, so we'll await further instruction if we should reach out to Brockton Area Transit and pursue some sort of relationship.
Right.
The Halifax Council on Aging Director, the hiring situation, that was recently extended out.
I'm sorry, did you?
The Halifax Council on Aging, that's been extended out, so.
They haven't made a decision yet?
No, I think that they picked somebody, but then the person may not have taken the position, so that timeframe is being pushed out. Charlie's been keeping myself and the Carver Town Manager apprised of what's going on. Once they have somebody on board and fully acclimated, we're still going to push the whole joint calendar initiative.
Right.
And look at all the facilities and see what we can do. It's just kind of on the back burner for right now. We have a large meeting tomorrow with all the folks regarding the fiber optic connection, and so people are coming from Regional Dispatch, and we have some folks coming from Silver Lake who are gracious enough to offer to sit in on the meeting and kind of offer some expertise to us, so hopefully we have a more concise plan going forward, is what we need to do. The dispatch costs are expected to rise significantly for next fiscal year. I had sent the memo with all of those figures to the Finance Committee, and they support the idea of maybe us setting up some sort of a joint meeting, like them coming to a Selectmen's meeting perhaps in late January, and inviting the folks from Duxbury to come and give the full presentation and really get into the numbers. So maybe if we scheduled that even for our last meeting in January.
Sounds good.
And just kind of get them here and do a full presentation, and we can post it, and.
I got a feeling there's going to be some sort of follow-up from that, you know, in terms of having to go back and take a look at things like calls, how they're handled, whether or not the appropriate costs. So I'm just wondering, in terms of the end of January, will that allow us enough time to then follow up and get ready?
It should, but I think maybe a preliminary memo now. I know the Fire Chief is looking into the call volume numbers, but those numbers didn't make sense.
Agreed.
I would be very surprised if we have a higher call volume than Halifax or Rockland. There's just no way.
No. We've got phone issues.
Phone issues, yes. Call volume, not so much.
So I would just say, you know, take a look at the timeline and make sure that end of January feels appropriate.
Works, okay. Our IT health check was completed last week, and we should have results fairly soon in the form of a report. They actually give you a report and presentation that could be used at public meetings and kind of justify certain shortcomings, and if you need funds to rectify those. So it's a high-level report, but they break it down in kind of an easy-to-read format. So we're looking forward to receiving that. And they also offered to come in and do a little debrief session.
Nice.
And kind of go over everything.
Okay.
So that's nice, and we, again, we didn't expend any funds on that, that was a free service offered through the state. Also, too, if you want to take a vote, I think we should set the right of first refusal hearing for the Haju properties, for those two notices of intent, for 61A.
So we have full applications now?
We do. They submitted supplemental info, and it seems like the 120-day clock is now ticking.
Okay.
So do we need to take that one?
We should, if you could vote to set the date for the public hearings, for Monday, January 27, 2020.
Monday, January 27, 2020.
Yes.
Okay.
And Mark will be here that date.
And that gives you enough time to get it posted.
That gives enough time to post, and it's after the special and after the New Year.
Okay.
And I sent that date as a proposed date.
Okay.
To their side of things, and they, you know, said, yep, like, just let us know.
Okay, and we would do that right at like 6:00?
Yes.
Okay, first thing, okay.
So if you're good with that, I'll kind of put this in the queue. I think it's a little too soon to run the public hearing notice now, because then people will forget about it.
Okay.
And I did send something to all of those boards that are in our regulations, our little policy on the 61A land, to let them know that if they have comments or recommendations, they need to get it to us.
And that gives them enough time.
Yes.
Okay, so do you want us to make a motion to hold that?
Sure, I would.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we hold the public hearing regarding the right of first refusal on the two Haju properties on Monday, January 27 of 2020 at 6:00 PM.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then for correspondence, we have a letter that came in through the online portal, and it's regarding dump trucks along Upland, Crescent, and Main Street. And it says that this individual, John Westbrook, it says that he is raising a concern on the number and size of dump trucks that are coming through Upland Road, Crescent Street, and Main Street. He feels that they are coming from a development site on Spring Street in Carver. He feels that the trucks are too big and that they are unable to safely negotiate the turns in the roadway, and he wants to see if something is able to be done to reroute them to more appropriate, larger-scale roads.
Okay.
He also indicated that someone let him know that Carver provisioned in the site agreement for the project that trucks are not allowed to go through Carver.
I don't think they can stop that.
I don't think that that's legal.
No.
I think he got misinformation.
But I can send something, if you'd like, to Michael from Carver.
Let's get a copy of it.
And just, and send it to him and say, is there any accuracy to this?
The other thing is, I'm not sure how they would come from Spring Street to Upland Road, that makes no sense.
It didn't make any sense to me either. I mean, it's right off of like 44, so that's what I don't understand.
One of the things we should ask is, I've got a feeling what he's seeing is these huge dump trucks for the cranberry picking, and Upland Road, Crescent Street, all those bogs behind there? I mean, I'm seeing, I'm living on Crescent.
Well, Ronnie, yep, does his bogs late, and there could be other people.
Well, there's the whole Morse Brothers over there, and then the Haju Brothers on the other side. So I think before we, you know, I think we should just go back and ask, I got a feeling that's Cranberry picking. It came up today in the Council on Aging when I was chatting with them, and everybody agreed it is the, these are huge trucks, it's just amazing.
Oh, they are, those big trucks that are loaded with cranberries?
Yeah, they almost look like two trucks.
Yeah, they are big.
Yeah.
And they're also coming through from here, because there's the plant that's over there.
Right.
It's a mytox.
Yeah, there's one there, and then there's the one in Carver.
Yeah, so.
I really don't, I got a feeling it goes away when cranberry season's over.
And we also had in the Plimpton-Halifax Express, there was a nice write-up and some great pictures for Silver Lake Regional for the girls soccer team. There was a highlight in there, how our Council on Aging is having a fairly good speaker series that's been set up, and they identified, like, the fraud resistance speaker that had come in. There was more interesting astronomy facts from Barry DeCristofano, and Tales of Old Plimpton. And also I received an email that Dr. Jill Prue, the Assistant Superintendent, is now the superintendent.
Yeah, that's great.
Being named for that position, so that's great.
There was also a letter to the editor supporting our outreach to Gatra, so.
Very good.
Good, good, good. All right, thank you, Liz, very much. All right, so boards' goals for 2019, long-range master plan for town campus, is there anything to report, nothing to report on that yet?
Well, we're meeting tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night with the town center campus meeting.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, senior needs, shared services, you talked about that, about when Halifax named their director, we're going to get back moving with that. Grant acquisition, anything news to report on that?
Uh, no.
No, just that we continue to pursue grants.
Yes.
All right, continue professionalization of town general and financial operations, we talked about that with the memo that we're going to be sending to the town accountant. Volunteer outreach to strengthen town boards and committees. We really have full boards and committees.
Just above full. I think we need to just do an update, but I think we're within, you know, 2% or 3%.
Which is great, that's, I gave John a copy of that rural communities plan, and that was one of the things that they talked about in there, how difficult it is to fill committees in rural communities, because it's such a small group of people.
It's really, it's basically.
We have such good, you know, people, it's amazing, it is.
It's, they come out and they work hard.
And they do multiple committees, it's just, it is, it's amazing, we would be in big trouble without them. Explore affordable housing opportunities and use of town-owned land and buildings, we continue to do that, and we're going to be meeting with the committee to talk about that tomorrow. Support town administrators' goals, we continue to support Liz's goals. Continue protecting towns' natural resources and unique character, that's something that we're going to be talking about tomorrow as well, and encouraging fiscally sound governments, we talked about that with our meeting with the finance committee to talk about this large bill that may be on the horizon for regional dispatch. All right, anything, any other business?
I don't think so.
Okay, dates to remember, our next meeting will be December 2. We've got minutes, we will be closed on Thanksgiving Day. Minutes, we've got open session from 10:07 and 11:04, thank you, Bree, for getting us those. So on 10:07, did you get a chance to look at these, John?
Yeah, the 10:07 one. The only question I had was down on the, sort of the middle of the first page where it talked about the speeds may be established. I don't think we ever talked about the intersections of Palmer Road and Crescent Street, at least I don't remember.
Those are the ones that Mark had asked about?
I think it was West Street and Cross Street, Main Street, and then Road and Minnetonka and Cross.
I'm not sure either, but there may be other intersections as well, so.
We can.
Okay.
The, okay.
All right, so, but what I had was speeds may be established at a minimum of 20, it's actually a maximum of 20.
A maximum of 20, right.
So I would just, established at 20 miles per hour, because there's no wiggle room there. With the, then we went into zoning by law edits for 40A process, solar and septic projects will be submitted direct to planning board for review and public hearing. So I think that was talking about the warrant, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so then the, the motion was, CJ made motion to approve TA to forward edits. I would say edits on proposed bylaws to town council for review, I would just add that. So it's crystal clear as to what the intent was.
And I'm wondering if it should be more, I believe that those, it was to start the public hearing process under 40A.
Okay, zoning by law edits for the 40A process, solar and septic projects will be directed to planning board for review and public hearing?
Yes, that's good, I like that.
Okay, because, yeah, that's what she's got, and then it said CJ made motion to approve TA to forward edits.
There were no edits.
So it's really more.
We just sent it direct to the planning board and said, here, start the process.
Forward proposed bylaws to town council for review.
Yes.
Okay, forward proposed bylaws to town council for review, okay. And then on South Shore Transformation, that was a beer and wine liquor license, wasn't it?
Yeah, yes, wasn't it?
It was a one-day, yes.
Yeah, okay, so I just put.
Beer, wine.
More specific, sure.
Yeah, if we could, yeah, so I just requested a one-day beer, wine, liquor license.
Sure.
All right, and then on the second page, Council on Aging requests to use large meeting room for veterans lunch and coffee hour, we didn't vote that, right? We didn't need to?
It's always, they, we put time in and you do.
Okay, yeah, so we didn't need to vote it, okay, perfect, all right.
The only other thing I had was under, where it says jail cell bids.
Yep.
Whether that should be jail sealed bids, closed on.
Or maybe C E L L.
It was sell.
Okay, so.
C E L L, jail.
Did I write S?
Yeah.
Jail, which one is this?
Under town administration.
Is that the same day?
This one here, it's on the second page.
Oh, jail cell, yeah, C E L L, okay, okay, okay. All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve the open session meetings from October 7 as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so now November 4.
Thank you.
The only thing I have of this was under the speed limited regulations piece, it says the board of selectmen has the authority to reduce subject to town meeting approval.
That's what I had too, is.
It's picked up in the next sentence, but it's a little.
Right, right, with town meeting approval.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so I'll start from the very beginning. So under discussions and update, it said CJ read the transfer station sticker, I think it was policy, not process.
Okay.
And then blah, blah, blah. MR updated the BOS on the speed limit regulations, and then I've got with town meeting approval, the BOS will have authority to designate safety zones with reduced speed limits, period.
That sounds good.
Okay, CJ made motion to include the warrant article for the town to authorize the board of selectmen to create safety zones at the special town meeting. That one's kind of, rather than, because there was just too much information there, okay. All right, and then, so that was that. Then with, I think this is how we made it, but I don't know if this is the best way to say it, is that we appointed Rob Furlot as a member of the emergency, what did I have here? Oh, it says CJ made motion to appoint Rob Furlot as a member of the emergency management 10-21-19. Is it effective 10-21-19?
Yes.
Okay, so effective 10-21-19, all right, so we'll just add effective. And then when we talked about the no alcohol policy, I would say, I would get, maybe get rid of owned land, and maybe just say town property, including land and buildings, because the alcohol policy was for everything.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that makes sense.
Okay.
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 Do you want to word it that way?
Yeah. Yep. Okay, so then on the next page, let's see, CJ made motion to appoint Chief Matthew Clancy as emergency management, as deputy emergency management, we just need to add director there. And then, so with Captain Schuester as emergency management member, should he be committee member, team member?
He's just a member of the emergency management team.
Okay, so we could just leave that then?
Yeah.
So as a emergency management member, okay. And then under minutes, executive session was 9:16:19, not 10:07, because those are the ones we're doing tonight.
Did we do the executive session from 10:07 that night?
No, we did.
We did those on November 4, right?
We did those on November 4?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so.
We did them as written.
All right, so then we have executive session 10:07:19, and then I made the motion to approve 9:16:19, so the motion doesn't follow the vote, because it says executive session 10:07:19, and then I made the motion to approve 9:16:19.
Did we do both?
I thought we did both.
We have 10:07 executive session and 10:28 open.
There was no, there was no meeting on 10:28.
Okay, why didn't, why were 10:28 on here?
Should we get rid of the 9:16:19?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, 10:28, that was when some of you attended the planning board meeting.
Oh, that's right, that was just open session.
So those were approved.
Those were.
November 4, those were approved, 10:28.
Christine abstained. What should that be, because she's got two different dates there.
I don't remember approving 9:16 at that meeting, I thought.
So we did 10:07?
Yeah, that was the only one we had open.
I think this is, might just be a typo, maybe this should just be, I know you did 10:07:19 executive session.
Okay, all right, so that's a typo.
10:28 you did open.
Yeah, okay.
Mark made the motion, and you abstained.
Okay, perfect, yep, okay, so that sounds good. All right, so that's all I've got.
So was I supposed to have another set of minutes of 9:16 in here?
No, it was 10:07, I think it was just a typo.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of November 4 as amended.
One second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we're current, thank you, Bree, very much.
John, your edits, your edits will be in.
They're in.
Okay, okay, all right, so ranting graves?
Well, I had, it's not really a rant or a rave, it's just more an acknowledgement. One of the people who is not from Plimpton but passed away was Danny Shaw.
I saw that.
Dan was a member of the Upland Club for many years, he was a member of the Patriots football team, and then went and played in Canada for two of the football teams. He and I had a relationship that I didn't know about till he brought it up, that I have a cousin that he grew up with, and his family, his father passed away, his mother passed away, and my uncle kind of adopted him, you know, not literally, but made sure he went to school.
Yeah.
Got him jobs, so I'm sorry to see that, he was a, I enjoyed talking with him.
Yeah, he was a fine man, and, you know, it was, yeah, unfortunate.
Definitely.
But I think he'd been sick for some time.
Yes, it was, yeah, it was not.
It was probably a blessing, you know, that he passed. I really don't have anything tonight.
I do, the sheriff's department is doing amazing.
Yes, they're really doing a wonderful job.
Oh, up front?
Painting and everything, it looks amazing.
Oh, good, good, well, thank you for sharing that, that's wonderful. All right, very good, so we will meet again on December 2, so we won't see everybody until after Thanksgiving.
Well, we do have a meeting tomorrow night.
We meet tomorrow, but it won't, is it going to be televised?
No.
Okay.
And it's the campus committee, so it is posted.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Very good, all right, well, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, yeah.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
One second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night.
Good night.